Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the viewers, to get a closer look at our local candidates as we talk about issues that are important to our community. We've gathered questions from social media, from emails. We've been to civic groups and talked and just gathered all kinds of questions and topics that are important, and we're here to discuss those. This is all leading up to the general election, which is on November 8th. We encourage you to go vote. But first, we need to get informed, and that's why we're here, and that's why we're going to talk today to the candidate Kyle Thompson, and he is running for city commission. So let's welcome Kyle.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Kathy. It's, I really appreciate Cable 10 having these meet the candidate forums so that everyone can get to know a little bit about each of the candidates. I'm a 46-year lifelong resident of Frankfurt. I have five children, three of my bio kids, and two bonus kids, and a couple dogs. And I have been practicing law here in town for about 21 years, and I also own one of the largest private probation companies in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So I'm excited about the campaign and what we may be able to offer as solutions to some of the issues that Frankfurt is facing.
Okay. Well, you've previously served on the commission, so my question is, what previous experience do you have? But is there anything else you want to share about why you think you have the qualifications to serve on the city commission?
I do. I will say that over my time with the city commission, I felt that I was able to express a set of opinions that has not always had a voice in this community, and I thought I represented that voice well. I will say that there are still some inefficiencies in local government. I believe that my experience as a businessperson, as someone who has written his name on the front of the check, not just on the back of a check, wherein, you know, I've had to make a payroll for many, many years and be able to make tough business decisions about growth and about, you know, cutting things and adding things when they're needed. I feel that I bring something to the table that's a little bit different than everyone else. At the same time, practicing law and knowing what the statutory language and statutory construction and how that applies to local ordinances and how we interpret those is very important. I would hope that my expertise would be taken as a good thing with regard to my knowledge base. I will say that in years past, it's been confounding at times to members of the Board of Commissioners who don't necessarily like my position on certain things, but that's okay. And I think that our great country was founded on the idea of diverse opinions, and I think that if given the chance to serve again, I will bring that voice and that experience that's necessary at a time when our city is really struggling with a lot of issues.
Okay. Well, there are six candidates on the ballot for city commission, and the top four vote getters are then elected to serve. You mentioned your experience as a lawyer, but what would you say distinguishes you from the other candidates?
Well, specifically my business experience and the fact that I've had to make some economic decisions regarding that business. But I have had to not only research and study and write for cases involving misdemeanors or family law cases in local courts, but all the way up to the U.S. Court of Appeals, where I've argued and being sworn into the United States Supreme Court. I have many life experiences, including coming from a family that owned retail businesses, even when I was as young as five years old, and then having my experience postgraduate of having to run my own business and learn how to run my own business. They don't teach you how to do that. It takes experience, and sometimes you make bad decisions, and you gotta get right back up and figure out how to fix them, and sometimes you make the right ones. And it's okay to admit when you have messed up on an economic decision, and I think that I have, I have the ability to set myself apart specifically because I have that ability to see from a 10,000-foot view of what the problems may be with the city of Frankfurt, but also my experience down on the ground as a businessperson, and also someone who's dealt with a number of the issues that we're facing one-on-one as just a citizen. So I think I bring that to the table, which other candidates may not, and I think that's why we'd be a good fit for the city commission.
Okay. Well, what do you think is the biggest issue facing our city commission right now?
Well, without question, the issue is revenues. The biggest concern coming forward is the fact that there is a projected deficit at the end of 2023 that is several million dollars. And what complicates that is that while the state has moved a majority of the people back to the offices three days a week, there are still a number of people who aren't working. Complicates it further is the fact that Franklin County is the only county of all of the contiguous counties around us that has a negative growth rate over the last two years. When you add that together, you have only a couple of options. The first option is the typical Frankfurt option, which is we're gonna tax, we're gonna raise the tax, and then we're gonna spend the money. There isn't usually a, let's find another funding stream that isn't on the backs of the individuals. Just yesterday, I saw in the State Journal, they were talking about raising the fees for trash in town. I adamantly opposed that when I was there. I think there are other things that can be done, including combining services and things of that nature with the county. But you add all those together, and you create a terrible problem, which is an economic, socio-economic issue in Franklin County that bleeds over into an issue related to crime and drugs. And if you don't address the employment issues and the educational issues that are needed in our community, then you will find yourself in a revolving door of increasingly bad conditions in our community. And this year alone, we will have the highest drug overdose rate deaths throughout the entire state of Kentucky. The state of Kentucky now has the highest drug overdose rate in the United States, so Frankfurt and Franklin County is ground zero. I feel that many times, the problems that we see, we don't realize that those compound on each other. And because we have this deficit, that deficit is being brought upon because we're shrinking in size, and we're shrinking in size because there aren't jobs and great schools, and there aren't great opportunities for families here. So we have to figure out how to fix that problem. But in the meantime, we also have to figure out how we're gonna fix the major needs of this community, which is we're losing an entire generation to drugs and alcohol, and that burdens my heart, and I want the city commission to get involved in those issues. I think we burden ourselves on things that are non-issues a lot of times. Just everyone jokes with me online, and you've probably seen this, you know, everyone said, "You're the only person to vote against chickens in the city." I just, I was fine with voting on it the very first time it came up. I just didn't think that was an issue that we needed to be addressing at that time when we have--
Spend a lot of time--
We spent a lot, we spent nine months on it when we have, you know, police officers leaving in droves, we have one of the highest crime rates in the state, and I just, I feel that those are, those issues compound on each other. So I know I've thrown a lot out there, but I think if you start fixing the economic problems, you start fixing a lot of the underlying issues as well.
Okay. Well, let's go back to budget for a minute.
Sure.
What experience do you have with large budgets, and what, how are you equipped to handle a budget as large as that of the city? It's tens of millions of dollars.
It is. At the same time, it's the taxpayers' money. It's their money. I have built a company that was one small office in Frankfurt to five offices, 20 employees, and now being the largest judicial drug testing and GPS provider in Kentucky. That has, that company has grown fivefold in just the last four years. I'm able to take care of those budgets that deal with the lives and families of the people that work for me. So I know what it means to make a payroll and to make those hard decisions. I've also been, I was at one time the youngest general counsel to ever be appointed in the state of Kentucky, and I had a large staff, and we had to deal with a large budget that came through. And as the only attorney for that agency, I had to make some decisions that, quite honestly, at the age of 27, I was, I was not prepared to do. I had to learn a lot on the job. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to learn a lot there, but there was a lot of learning that went on there. But because I've had, I have the business sense, and because I help dozens of other organizations and million-dollar companies with their legal and financial aspects, I feel that I have the ability to handle the macro side as well as the micro side that needs to be focused on in an economic decision process.
Okay. Well, you mentioned the impending revenue shortfall that we're gonna experience if elected. What steps would you advocate for to put our city on firmer financial footing?
So I think the first thing we have to understand is that this city has, has a 40-year, at a minimum, issue that has sprung to life now. We have a lot of people who have been elected to office who are more worried about what names are gonna be on buildings or locations, even parking lots, as opposed to how are, how are the least of our citizens affected by big issues? And because of that, you can't fix it overnight. But one of the easiest things to do, I believe, is to combine services. Now, that's not the dirty word that a lot of people like to talk about, which is--
We're gonna bring it up here in a minute.
Yeah. But I do believe that there, that there is a need to combine the services that the city and county both offer. We're, we are redundant in the services that we provide, yet they are not equal. Our zoning codes, we have a joint zoning committee--
Yeah.
But we have two different zoning codes and ordinances. We have two different, we have two different zones--
Yeah.
--zoning offices, planning offices. It would only make sense if we truly want to make Frankfurt and Franklin County more business-friendly to combine those efforts. We have heard for years that Frankfurt is not business-friendly, and then people say, "Well, that's not really true. We've got great people to work in those offices." But if we're hearing it from other people who aren't from Frankfurt, then there might be something to that. And so if we combine those resources, bring some of those things in-house as opposed to hiring people outside, then I think we immediately start that process. The other thing that does is, we need to realize that the time of cities running particular programs for a loss, just because they provide an amenity to the community, is over. That's, that's not how things work. That's not how large cities work. That's not how small cities work. If you look at communities that are much smaller than us, or the exact same size, Paducah and Elizabethtown, and I'm thinking of Corbin, they don't, those cities have third parties that run their parks department for profit. And that doesn't mean that everything gets raised in price. It means that those people know how to run efficient businesses because they run parks.
Yeah.
I believe that the city could have a wonderful arts and performance program that would include an amphitheater in town. That should be a third party, a public-private partnership with Alive Nation or an organization such as that that does that all over the world. Chris Stapleton performs in Corbin. Why is, why can't he perform in Frankfurt? It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So I think there are very quick fixes, but you'd have to get people to cooperate. Now, I have, I have a hope with the new group that I believe will be coming in with the county and the city, but in, in my last term, we had two joint meetings with the county. That, that can't happen, and it needs to happen once a quarter at a minimum, if not once a month, and that, that I think will begin to start--
Well, that was, you know, my question, you know, we'll say merger--
Yeah. You know, that's a dirty word.
If people aren't, if, if we're not ready for merger, then, then how do you propose that the city and county work together more efficiently?
Well, I think, I think people have been scared of merger because the leaders in the past, specifically the previous mayor and the previous judge-executive specifically spoke out against merger, and their biggest cry was, "Your taxes are gonna get raised." Well, that's not what happens. What happens is, if you combine resources, you combine the efforts and the time and the things that you already have, and things actually go down in price, you know? One of the things that my father, who lived and has always lived in the county, said to me is, "I would never vote for merger because, you know, I don't wanna pay city taxes." And I would always say, "You would pay one tax, and it may actually go down if, if the reality is that it costs less to run some of these things." But what, what happens in Frankfurt and Franklin County is, we lose sight of the fact as elected officials or even concerned citizens that the folks who live in Peaks Mill and the folks that live in Bridgeport and the folks that live in South Frankfurt and the folks that live in Indian Hills, we're all Frankfurt people. We don't have multiple cities in this county. We're all products of the city or the county schools, or our kids go there. We need to combine our efforts and quit making it a east-side, west-side thing. We're not, you know, the Sharks and the Jets. We just, we need to actually come together and work. And so let's not talk about merger with the idea of, "We're gonna combine all resources." You know, "We're all gonna meet together every week." No, that's not what I'm proposing. What I'm proposing is simple things: waste management, planning and zoning, parks. Start with those three.
Yeah.
And I think you immediately cut down on fees for each of those services, you cut down on need-based issues, and I think you open up a much broader variety of options in the future for those areas. And I, I think those are the, especially, one example in closing this question is that, you know, when, when you're dealing with the trash needs of 27,000 people versus the trash needs of 51,000 people, you have a different bargaining ability.
Right.
It just makes sense.
Yeah.
The other thing that I was disappointed with by the city commission and the city staff was that we didn't explore thoroughly the idea of bringing, of starting our own regional recycling center. We are, we are paying other cities to take our recycling, and unfortunately, if you actually look where the recycling is going, we're not saving the planet in any manner because it's going in a, just a different landfill in China. And so unless, unless you have a plan or a program that truly reuses and recycles those, which you can do, then we're, we're just making ourselves feel better sleeping at night instead of actually making a difference in the world, and I think we can do that here.
Okay. Well, even, we're at a time of high inflation. Everybody's feeling it. And as you mentioned, the city commission is discussing multiple tax increases that are gonna directly impact the people here. So what belt tightening could you, as a city commissioner, advocate for to make sure the city is not spending money it doesn't have so that it too can live within its means just like the constituents have to?
First and foremost, the staff that we have at the city is amazing. However, there are, we have to make sure that the individuals who are in certain positions with the staff are able to do all the things that we require them to do. And whether it's in legal services, or whether it's in planning and zoning, or whether it's in parks, if we're going to pay high salaries, or if we are going to pay individuals to come in and be our representatives with regard to, say, development, we need to make sure that we have some type of basis where we can, we can value the work that they're doing. That's the first thing. I think I'm the biggest advocate for city employees and for hard-working, dedicated heroes like our fire and police, but they're not providing the resources they need. So how do you say, "We need to tighten the belt when we need more social, social workers with the city, but we need more police officers too?" At any one time at night shift in the city of Frankfurt, we have six police officers for, for, you know, 50 square miles, 55 square miles. That means that if there is one driving under the influence, person pulled over or suspect, then there's nobody watching the city of Frankfurt at night, and that, that's concerning right now in these times. So to tighten the belt, I think we need to, we need to find those areas where we are throwing money away, and I'll just use one example. The fact that the county schools, the city and the county are, we're all doing different studies regarding a pool, it's a waste of resources. You know, even if it's, if everybody's spending $40,000, why didn't those groups get together and spend $40,000 one time? There's nobody that's coordinating those efforts, and nobody's communicating. It's always an us-versus-them mentality, and we have to drop that in this town. It's always an east-versus-west. It's a, you know, this school again-- We have to stop. We're all Frankfortonians, and if we want Frankfurt to do better, then it's not a matter of, "Well, you may be getting a new department store on the west side. What's the east side gonna get?" Frankfurt benefits.
Yeah.
That's, that's the best part of it. So I think that's the first thing that we have to do.
Okay. Well, big issue is economic development and growth here in our community. So I just wanna start out by asking you, how do you define economic development?
Economic development is very easy--
Okay.
--because you can see it. You can touch it, you can see it in the dollars that go into the general fund of the city and the county. You have the ability to see new jobs that are coming in. Unfortunately, over the last 10 to 12 years, every community around us has benefited from phenomenal economic development. A good example is Shelbyville. Shelbyville just recently approved 3,000 home builds. 3,000! And I think we, I think we had about 20 last year. That's economic development differences right there. So we have to be able to not just bring in jobs, but we have to bring in dollars from out of town. And we have one of the greatest exporters in the entire state of Kentucky, one of the greatest brand names in the world at Buffalo Trace. And what Hershey, Pennsylvania is to chocolate, Frankfurt as the cradle of the modern bourbon industry, that's exactly what it is, this is where the modern bourbon industry was created, we need to embrace that. We don't need to shy away from it. We need to embrace it. They're also one of our largest employers next, the second next to the state. So we need to embrace that wholly, and, you know, in every median, we need to have a three-foot wooden buffalo. We need to have every bridge and overpass, you know, painted as the home of the world's most decorated bourbon. Those things will bring in economic development because it brings dollars from other communities to Buffalo Trace, and then the hotels and the restaurants and things of that nature. Also, sports tourism. You have to have a regular, ongoing sports tourism schedule. And again, going back to what I said earlier, the Frankfurt Parks Department and the Franklin County Parks Department are not in the business of making money. That, it's not what they're supposed to do. They are to provide services and make sure the fields are mowed and things of that nature. But if you have an organization that actually brings in these tournaments, everyone will benefit. You'll have restaurants popping up all over the place. If you go to someplace the size of Winchester that has 15,000 people, and, and you pull into George Rogers Clark High School, it's like a small college campus. It's unbelievable. And we don't have that here because every restaurant in Winchester is full. Everyone here is closing. And why is that? And it's because we don't have those outside dollars coming in.
Well, there, you know, people have concerns about how we don't have the pool--
Mm-hmm.
And--
I know.
And also, the County Parks Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Franklin County Fiscal Court, is setting up a sports tourism commission in the county. That commission will be tasked with finding a revenue stream that will fund the construction of a multi-sport complex at Lakeview Park. How should city government be involved in that process?
Well, first and foremost, everyone that uses that facility is, is part of the Frankfurt community.
Yeah.
Every restaurant that is, is gonna benefit from that is probably inside the, the city limits. We should absolutely not only be a part of that sports commission, but we should give it all of our support and everything we can do to make sure that moves forward. I'm, I'm very much in favor of Squire Tracy and the others who are pushing that, Squire Blackburn. I think it's a phenomenal idea, but I would take it one step further. That revenue stream is not gonna be where a sports commission is trying to determine, "Well, we're gonna schedule these ball turn"-- no. We're not in the business of that. There are, there are organizations, corporations, publicly traded corporations. Their job is to make profits and revenues. And the city of Paducah, for instance, is receiving millions of dollars back every year on their parks department, whereas we are losing $400,000 on just one park. So the city needs to be involved wholly because it's our kids that are playing in those, those areas, and it's all of the surrounding counties that we wanna bring in for those tournaments and those sports. The other thing that benefits, our county schools benefit if you do that because not only do you get kids better mental health and better physical health, but you have better facilities, and you have better teams, and you have better fan bases. Again, also brings in more, more revenues eventually. And I think that comprehensive plan needs to include the idea that we need an outside authority to help make those things happen.
Okay. What do you see as the role of the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation, and how does it fit in with your vision of economic development in our community?
So KCDC, and I was, I was intricately involved with KCDC from the moment that I went on to the city commission. KCDC is a DBA. It is, it is a Doing Business As, and it is SECA. It is the same SECA that we've had since 1994 and then incorporated in '95. That organization has goals and objectives. One of the things that I think the city has been unfairly had, aspersions cast upon it is based upon the fact that they say, "Well, you don't tell us what you want or what you need. You're the economic development experts. You are the ones who know what you need to do, plus your organizing documents say exactly what you're supposed to do." And SECA, then KCDC, one of their, one of the most basic things is their funding stream. We've, we were criticized for lowering it two years, and they lowered it the year before I was there. But what everyone misses about that is that SECA and then KCDC, their organizing documents say that 20% of all their funding is supposed to come from private entities. 20%! And to my knowledge, since 1995, so that would be more than 27 years, not once has any dollar ever gone into the general fund of KCDC from private industry. So that's the, that's the first problem. We have to follow the, the documents that we have. The second thing is, if they are bringing in new dollars, if they are working with our organizations to expand those operations, then that's where I see KCDC as a, as a team player. Unfortunately, I think there have been times, and I will use Parcels B&amp;C as, as an example, where the city commission, the county, and others are, are fed some lines by outside entities, and they say, "We're gonna..." The very first meeting I was ever at, we were told, "We're gonna invest $50 million into downtown Frankfurt." Well, I knew that was baloney. We weren't ever gonna see $50 million in investment in downtown Frankfurt because that would be a foolish endeavor by any developer at this time. You have to build growth. And so I didn't think it would ever happen, but I was told multiple times that, yes, this is, this is exactly what's gonna happen. And I think the city many times gets stars in their eyes, and they see that this would be great to do, and KCDC jumps on board with that, and they say, "We're gonna make this happen," but there's no follow-through. And that, that piece of grass has been sitting there for almost four years now, and everyone says, "Well, we've been waiting on the money for the transit center." Unfortunately, I think the transit center was a terrible idea. I think everyone in the community thinks the transit center was a terrible idea, and it was one of those ideas where it was, "You have to accept the money from the federal government. You have to do it. You have to, or you'll never get any money again."
Yeah.
And that's just simply not the case. If it's a terrible idea, then what good is it? And that is gonna, that one structure alone has doubled in price, and since just January of '21, when I was on the board, we were told that there would be a, a TIF that would be provided there or entered into. There is no such TIF, and economic development is not gonna give that TIF. And I think that when it comes to promises like that, it's easy to promise things. It's harder to show results. And I'm a results-driven guy, not only in my, my law practice, but in my business practices and in my household. I wanna, I want my children-- I want to, I want my children to succeed and work hard. And I want to see growth, and I want to see progress.
So would you support the city's continued funding of KCDC?
I would actually support bringing economic development in-house until the county and the city have a comprehensive economic development plan. Now, that doesn't mean the comprehensive plan that everybody talks about and always, always discusses. I'm talking about, do we want to be the bourbon capital of the world? Do we want to be the, the next aerospace engineering location in Kentucky, which happens to be our number-one exporter of goods, is aerospace engineering and products? What is it that we want to do? Because other cities like Shelbyville and Georgetown, they've figured out what they want to do. Shelbyville, for example, again, using them, they've had over $2 billion in programs and projects that have started just in the last year. $2 billion. They have much less in the way of resources than we do. But Shelbyville has a workforce, and we are losing people, whereas Shelbyville is gaining people. And that, therein lies the problem. So I would, I would not be opposed to working with the county, but I think the city should bring things in-house, work with the city, and then maybe that person becomes a joint individual for both the city and county, so that there is some accountability to the Board of Commissioners and the fiscal court, which we don't have at this point. And in fact, the, the bylaws don't allow for that. So I would, I would ask for that to be considered. In fact, October of '21, I actually made a motion before the Board of Commissioners, and it was voted to table that. That motion was to either dissolve KCDC, or in the alternative, restructure KCDC. And that motion was tabled, and it is still on the proverbial table, I think. It has never been discussed after that meeting. And yet, we, we've still had negative growth during those two years. So there has to be something that's done. And I think if what we're doing is not working, we have to figure out something that will work. And that, that is not what we have right now.
Okay. Well, we've run out of time. But I gotta get in one more question.
Hardly.
One of the responsibilities of the city commissioners is that they are responsible for making board appointments.
Yes.
So are, is there any changes you would make to that process? And what, what particularly do you look for in appointments to boards?
You know, appointments to boards are hard. It's hard because it's hard to find people that are willing to serve. And, and honestly, I've had a lot of people, I've called people and said, "Will you serve?" And they would say, "Why would I serve?" You know, there's, it's thankless. Many of them are non-paid. You're criticized in the front page of the paper. You're talked about. Your kids are, you know, talked about. Why would you go through all that? And I say, "Because it's fun. You want to do those things." And usually, they laugh at me. It's hard. I don't blame the mayor for having a hard time filling some of these roles. But what I think there needs to be is, there needs to be a presentation of these individuals to the Board of Commissioners, so that we can see who they are and what their abilities are. There may be an objection that one person may know that another person doesn't know. And the last thing I'll say about that is that we have to have more diversity on there. And I'm not just talking about diversity of race and culture and gender. I'm talking about the fact that we have, I think right now, we have two registered Republicans on the over 150 board appointments throughout the city and county. So that is, that, that's a bad place to be when we're in a community that's turning more purple every day. We need to have good representation from all sides. And that's not coming from a guy who's speaking as a Republican. It's just, it's just a fact. You do better when you have a diversity of ideas, and I think that needs to be considered. I don't blame the, the mayor for that at all, because it's hard to find those people to serve. But I think, I think at this time, those need to come to the commission. We need to, we all need to talk about them and work through those, those offerings.
Okay. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to you and let you address, briefly address, our, our viewers and tell them why they need to vote for you on November 8th.
First of all, Kathy, thank you for having us. Thank you for letting me drone on over and over again. It tends to be one of my, my bad habits. I will say this. I, I love my hometown. She, she's always been good to me. I received a good education in this town. I raised my family in this town. I have three biological children that were all born here. I was lucky enough to have a couple of awesome bonus kids that came along as well. And, and my wife and I, we, we love this community. My, my family has, has had businesses here. We have worshipped here. We have worked very hard, even as alumni of our schools. And I want to see this community grow. My fear is that dark days are ahead if we do not look for new funding resources, if we do not look towards new ideas of combining resources. And if we don't look to the idea that it's not government's job to necessarily run every aspect of the city, if someone, a third party or a private entity can do it better and more efficiently and more affordably. And I think we need to think outside the box for the first time in this community. And when I say think outside the box, simply look outside of the box in these other counties, and we haven't quite done that yet. I would ask for your vote on November the 8th because there is a lot of work to do in this town, and I don't sleep. I tirelessly work to make everything I work on better. And I promise you that if elected, I will make Frankfurt better, even if it's just with the, the fact that I will bring new ideas and the ability to research and write and study the problems that we have. And I will do everything I can to make our hometown the hometown I always wanted to raise my children and my grandchildren in. And again, thank you so very much, and thank you to everyone watching out in Frankfurt.
Well, thank you for taking the time to sit down with us. I know, I appreciate it, and our viewers appreciate hearing from our local candidates. And I appreciate you, our viewers, for tuning in and getting informed, because that's so important before you go vote on November 8th. After you go vote on November 8th, I'm going to tell you to go home and turn it on Channel 10 and watch our live election returns, because we'll have them coming to you live from the county clerk's office, play-by-play. It's election season. That means it's time to get informed. And then go vote, because your vote is your voice. Please use it.